This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I'll make a motion to call the meeting to order. Wait for Frank.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Frank Galusha, trustee.
Thank you, Frank. Thank you, Frank. Dorothea, would you call a vote, please?
Absolutely. Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Keating looks like he's joining.
Why are we starting this meeting early? Can we wait till it's time, please? It's not four yet. Thank you.
Oh, I see. I just noticed 3:58.
That's not four. Thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to point out before the meeting starts that I don't have my other computer, so my agenda is on my phone, so that's why I had my phone available, but it's turned off. But my agenda is on it, so I'm going to be referring to it if needed. Thank you.
Bob, you're muted.
We have a motion on the floor to call the meeting to order. Frank, would you like to second it?
I'll second that motion. Trustee Galusha?
Yes, trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye. Does any member have any conflicts of interest or appearances of a conflict of interest they would like to disclose?
I have nothing to report at this time. Trustee Galusha?
I do not. Trustee Lampier?
I do not. Mayor Corby?
I do not. Stetser?
Dan, do you have any conflicts of interest?
I do not have any conflicts of interest.
Okay, we have two items on our agenda to consider today. The first is a revised resolution that Jeff has suggested, authorizing the mayor and Dan Keating to review the submitted bids from CCA. Jeff, I said we have a formal resolution to do this. I'm proposing that. Would someone like to second that?
Lampier, second.
Dorothea, would you call a vote, please?
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Okay, the second item we have.
Hold on. Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Our second item. Hold on. Excuse me, I'm speaking, Dan. Excuse me, I'm speaking. Thank you. Our second item, Jeff, is to set a resolution to allocate $2,600 for initial plannings for the village arboretum. $1,600 of that money has come from the community solar fund, which was specifically allocated by the village board for that purpose. The other $1,000 is from unspent money.
Taking up.
On trees. Excuse me, Dan, I'm speaking. Please don't interrupt.
Nobody can hear you. Nobody can hear you, Bob, because your phone is breaking up. Okay? Calm down. Nobody can hear you.
I'm not on my phone. I'm on my computer.
Okay, nobody can hear you because your computer is breaking up, Bob. Okay? Nobody heard a word of that. So calm down. Before we get going, I have one question. Why are we doing this as a special meeting? I have no idea why we're doing this as a special meeting. What is the urgency that we have to do this today instead of letting the mayor-elect handle it at the next regular trustees' meeting? I guess there's no, I haven't seen a reason why we need to do this meeting now. It seems crazy to me, especially given that it's four o'clock on a workday when we can't get our, can't get people there. But still, we have a lot of people here, which is great. Thank you for your engagement. So nobody can hear you, Bob. Maybe try and get your, try and get your audio working a little better.
All right.
To help you. Frank or Lily, do you have any idea why we're doing this as a special meeting today?
I under.
Go ahead, Lily.
I understood there was a time element involved because of getting rid of the invasive species before they got too much of a foothold in the spring. That was my understanding.
We just learned of this now?
Could you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, we heard.
Okay.
What did you understand, Frank?
I didn't.
Okay, you didn't. Renee, did you know why we're doing this as a special meeting?
Hi. No, other than that a bid came in.
Okay. Generally, I don't know. Usually, we all get, I still don't have a good answer for that, so. I'm in favor of tabling it until we have time to actually work on it and to notify the public. This.
No.
Can I make a request that the people in the office wear masks? This is insane to me. We have three people in close proximity who are not wearing masks during the pandemic. Like, first of all, why aren't people at home? Second of all, why aren't they wearing masks? They're good. Thank you, Dorothy. I appreciate it.
Dorothy, we can't hear Bob. We can't hear you either. I'm sorry.
Dorothea, do you recollect what the minutes reflect regarding the scheduling of this meeting? How's your memory?
This was scheduled after our trustees' meeting, Frank. This was not discussed during the trustees' meeting, that we were going to have this special meeting. This was scheduled after. I mean, if there's a sense of urgency and something has to be done, then something has to be done, but I don't understand. Oh, good. We've got, guys, two people, no masks, close distance. Come on.
Want to say that?
Until we get the lights working, the meeting will be recessed.
I didn't hear that. Did anybody hear that?
Bob is saying recess until we get the lights working. Did everybody hear me say that?
It's really bad, breaking up badly. Mary?
Use the phone. Phone number. There's a phone number you can call in.
I have to ask, Dorothy, I haven't tried that.
Oh, there you go. That was better.
I haven't done anything. It just, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, Bob just said recess until we get the lights. Was that breaking up?
It's being, it's being obviously persnickety.
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we go into recess until 4:15.
I'll second that. Stetser?
All in favor? All in favor?
Is Dorothea going to call a roll call? That's usually what she does.
She can't.
She's not speaking.
We can handle this. All in favor?
One moment. One moment. Why are we going into recess, Dan?
Because the mayor asked us to recess, correct? Didn't he just say?
Dan asked to recess.
Yeah, but I think Mary said that Bob asked us.
Excellent. Okay, I'm just waiting for direction here. I'm good. I'm just sitting here. I'll turn off my mic.
Sounds good.
Absolutely.
Excuse me, can anyone hear me? Good. I have a request to make because I'm ducked. I will implant, but I don't get enough sound through the implant. Would you please put the closed captioning on for this unit?
I don't believe there's closed captioning in go-to-meeting. I'll write this in the chat.
You'll have to text that to me. My number is 506-6268. Do you need that number again?
No.
I thought Pittsburgh was included.
Me, too. 6268.
Then except a question, if there's not closed captioning available, if there's someone who's able to caption what's being said during the meeting.
Dorothy, that is the chief reason that I want to use Zoom rather than go-to-meeting. We'll talk about this at another time.
I didn't get anything from you. Could you please type it, text it to me? The number is 506-6268.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hold on.
Hello, Ms. Dulsky. I'm not sure you received the texts I sent you.
Bob, you'll have to take mute off.
Okay. All right. Can people hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, all right. So let's start over here back. The reason we're considering the allocation of money for the arboretum is because last Monday, I met with native horticulturist Jim Engel to walk the arboretum, to basically draft a plan of what steps would be necessary to remove the invasive species, some of which the work has already been done by the DPW, and also to establish seed plannings in addition to the permaculture project that's being orchestrated by a frog house. Zach has also committed to participate in Meadow County's monarch butterfly program, which part of that program is the planting of milkweed seeds, which support the habitat for monarch butterflies, which, as you all know, are endangered. We received $1,600 as of last Thursday from the community solar program for funds that were specifically allocated for the arboretum. In addition to that, I proposed taking $1,000 from unspent monies in the village forestry fund in this year's village budget, not next year's. The reason we want to allocate, to spend that money today, is because we're at a critical point in the growing season to do the preparation work of removal of invasive plants. And tomorrow, I'm meeting with Zach Blyer to go down to the arboretum and show him areas of Alanthus trees, tree of heaven, which is an invasive tree species from China, which is present in one of the areas, which we believe would be the seed area where we would start to establish native plannings. The DPW forces will remove those trees by cutting them down and pulling the stumps and prepare that area for planting. We've also removed piles of gravel. There's still a bit more that has to be taken away so that we can begin the transition of this piece of property into an arboretum. So the proposal today is to spend $2,600. And I would ask if Lily Lampier, since I will no longer be on the board.
We can't hear you.
Did you lose me there?
You're breaking up. Can you use a telephone, please? Your Wi-Fi is not working great where you are, and it keeps breaking.
I'm in village hall, and I'm on a village laptop, so people can't use. Hear me?
Okay.
Lily, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I can't. That last sentence was a little bit broken up, but before that, I could hear perfectly.
Well, I can call in on the phone. Just give me a, let's recess for a minute. And I'll call in on the phone.
There is absolutely no reason we need to do this today. Want to be on the record with that. A bunch of nonsense, and you all know it.
May I ask that people be polite to one another?
May I ask that my children not get yelled at by the former mayor Corby?
Okay.
Thank you. My fuse is a little low today.
Okay, it's understandable.
Yeah, it is understandable. Thank you, Lily. A little empathy. I appreciate that. Go after my kids. We have a problem.
Okay, yes. Stop it. That's not in this meeting, please. Thank you very much.
Stop it? Who said stop it? I'm not going to stop it when someone goes after my kids. You got it?
Someone has been going after a lot of people for a long time, so please stop the smearing and the bickering and the carrying on. This is legitimate, and just be nice.
Excuse me? Somebody has been going after.
Okay, please. It does not appropriate for this meeting. Respectfully.
Okay, let's get back.
Request that we not discuss back on track, please.
Okay. Topics we're discussing.
Lily, question for you. When is it an appropriate time to talk about?
In personal, personal time. It's not village.
I don't think it's personal.
Okay, Dan, you're out of order. The topic we're discussing today is the allocation of $2,600 for the arboretum. All right, as I was saying before, the reason we're doing this today is at the beginning of April is a critical time because we need prep time to remove some of the invasives. There's still a little grading work that will be done by the DPW to prepare it for planting. Then, depending on who the vendor is that we contract to plant with, we need to get the plannings in before the end of May and the beginning of the fiscal year. So time really is of the essence. That's the only reason we're having a special meeting today, to move that ahead. I would ask also, in my proposed, my motion today, that we designate Lily Lampier as the point person to oversee the plannings and working with Jim Engel or someone else that she approves to make sure that this happens. We have $2,600 to spend. Most of it will be spent on shrubby and smaller plants, and the idea is to crowd out the invasives and over time to make the site prepared for the planning of larger specimen native trees.
Will any roundup be used? Will any roundup or any other chemical agent be used?
No, no chemical agents are being proposed.
Wait, I have a question about that, Mayor Corby. In the, or in our packet, it says that glyphosate will be used.
We talked with, we talked with the contractor. There's an alternate way of removing the invasives without the use of glyphosate, which we believe is a carcinogen, particularly because the arboretum is near the wetlands in the Erie Canal Preserve. We don't believe that we should use any glyphosate. So no glyphosate, no roundup will be used. The removal of invasives will be done mechanically.
I want to see that in writing, because right now, what's in writing is that it will be.
It's part of the motion. It's part of the motion.
Not good enough. I want to see it in the proposal. Sorry. I don't trust any. Sorry.
Well, I'm making the motion. This is what the motion is, Dan, and it's very clear that no glyphosate is being used.
It wasn't until I raised it.
Could you, there was a question. May I be recognized, please?
Yes, go ahead, Lily.
Would you please list the invasives, at least some of them? I know that they are in the proposal. I know Japanese knotweed is one of them.
Japanese knotweed, Alanthus is the most noxious existing invasive on the site because they're trees, they're larger. It'll be a little more work to remove them, but it is quite possible. They're in two fairly distinct little groves. The other reason for removing them besides that it's an invasive tree, they grow rapidly, they break easily. They also have juglans, which is a chemical secreted by the tree, which makes it more difficult to grow other things underneath them. We also had a significant patch of Japanese knotweed over the winter. The DPW crew mechanically removed that and have removed that from the property. Some of that will, is expected to come back this year, so we'll probably need a repeated treatment for probably even three or four years because it's a highly tenacious plant, but that's underway. And so these really are the critical steps that need to be taken now to begin the transition of the arboretum into a mature northeast hardwood forest woodland community.
Will the public be allowed to comment before the vote?
Yes, it's up to the board.
Yes.
Yes.
Just so everybody's clear, the next mayor takes office on the first, might even be the 31st, so that's in a couple days.
The 5th.
The 5th, okay. We have a trustees' meeting a week from tomorrow, just so everybody knows the schedule.
Could you say, please, what the date of the next meeting is, Dorothea?
I haven't heard that officially yet.
Okay, thank you. I have, I thought it was the first Tuesday. That's the only reason I asked for clarification.
The first meeting I have on the calendar at this time is April 13th. I haven't heard from Ms. Plummer yet on if she wants to. I know she's thinking I'm having a special meeting. She hasn't given me that meeting date and time yet.
Okay.
And Ms. Plummer does not take office till the first Monday in the month, the first Monday of the month following the general election, which is April 5th, and so she would not make a motion to set a special meeting until April 5th.
Okay, fine, fine with me. I see no reason to rush this through. This has been going on for 30 years. There's absolutely no reason to rush this through. I'm firmly against it, and not just because of your behavior toward my children today, firmly against. Oh, sorry, Lily. Is that upsetting to you? Hey, Margot, no, thank you.
Dan, try to stand topic and please try to be respectful to our audience today.
Okay, I will try to be respectful to our audience today.
Bob, would you like me to see if anybody wishes to speak so we can move along?
Sure.
Please.
Ms. Evans, you questioned if you'd be allowed to speak. Would you like to speak? You can now.
We would like your name and address.
Oh, absolutely. Kendra Evans, 66 Meadow Cove Road. Thank you for this. I would like to echo the concerns about the use of the pesticides to remove the invasive species that is troubling to those of us that have been in support of the Frog House for as long as we have and for all of the, all of the life that forms, both in the village side of the land, but throughout Pittsburgh. It matters to all of us. I don't understand why we need to have a special meeting now. These invasive species have been there, probably for the bulk of your term, and given that the new mayor takes office on April 5th at noon, it seems rather rushed that we're voting on it at this moment in time. If we had cared about the invasive species, they could have been removed at any point before now. So to do it at this point feels like there are other motives. So I agree that making certain that the roundup equivalent that is proposed in what was shared with the public, that that should be in writing, that it will not be used as it's harmful to the biodiversity of our entire community. So I would ask that this either be tabled or voted down so that it can. or voted down so that it can be evaluated by the duly elected members of the board as Justin and Alisa take over in just over, just under a week. Actually, it's past noon. Thank you.
Okay, I'd just like to respond to that. Uh, as I had previously explained, removal of invasive species has already begun. Work was done over the, the winter. Uh, we've been talking about the arboretum since the time the award-winning comprehensive plan was established. Um, I also would note that Kendra was Lisa Plummer's campaign manager. And so she, she has an interest in the outcome here. But the board that is in place today is the board that is in place until April 5th and the only board that has the responsibility of making decisions on this. This is not, this is something we've been talking about all winter. Uh, we first discussed this last July at the meeting when the board deemed this area is parkland. And so this is not, this is not a last minute thing. It is a continuation of a lengthy discussion about the arboretum and the preparatory work that has already been underway.
I don't, I don't recall that at all. Can you please pull those meeting notes so we can go through what was said then? Because I don't recall that at all. It's possible.
Dan, that's, Dan, that's your responsibility. If you want to do research, you can do that, but not on meeting time.
I, I'm talking.
Please.
Hold on, I'm, I'm talking. All right. That may very well be, but, um, that's something I would want to review and see what the conversation was back then. I'd also like to adamantly disagree with Mayor Corby's assessment that Kendra being involved in Ms. Plummer's campaign has anything to do with this. I, I think that's conjecture and slander, frankly. I, I, I hear somebody who's voicing concern for the environment. Um, so I just want to go on the record with that. Thank you.
Yeah, right.
Trustee Lanfier?
Yes, you are recognized.
Thank you. I want to, to clarify that the, the way the invasive species will be removed is mechanical, by mechanical means. Could that be added to the motion? So that it is on the record. It's the same as having it in the proposal because it's what we are approving.
That is correct. That is correct.
So I'm not, I don't want to make this, I, I just seem to me that there are any, that there are any political underlying motives here, so I don't know why it's being spun that way. I, I just, I know that in last June, is when the trustees designated this area as parkland. So it, that's, that's not new. And the fact that we were working towards a creating an arboretum has been an ongoing conversation. So I'm, that's not new. I, I'm just, I'm handling this, the way I'm dealing with this is that we received a proposal uh, that the gentleman expressed an interest in getting the, the work done as quickly as possible. That the time was of the essence. It seemed, uh, that the money was in place because of the, um, agreement by all the trustees at a previous meeting that the, um, Community Solar Fund would be used for the removal of the invasive species. So that was done. It just seemed like the last piece, it was not, I, I just, I don't know what I want to say. It's just a, um, formality to allocate the funds specifically. And that's the way I'm viewing it.
Margot Fass had her hand up next, so I'm going to recognize Margot Fass.
Thank you. Kendra, thank you for recognizing that a Frog House has been crazy, crazy about eliminating pesticides and chemicals. And when I heard that Jim Engel had any inkling of that, uh, some people can, can attest who were there that I got pretty excited and I said, no, 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 no. So that's a certainty, but that one of the timeliness is that we've had a promise or an indication that uh, we can get this thing funded, um, even up to 20 to $30,000 from a private source as long as it is used for, so trees in the arboretum. Now, if, uh, if, um, it is turned down now, that, that money is not likely to be, uh, available. And so why the village would want to say, no, I don't want, uh, we don't want money for trees is, is a little strange to me, but, uh, um, as a Frog House, we, we are about advocacy, education and collaboration. And I'm also about goodwill. And, uh, so, so, uh, Rob has, has worked really, really hard ever since I met him in 2018. He's been talking about the arboretum, the arboretum, nonstop. And there have been lots of other things to take care of. And this is now a time when he is in a position to be able to, to lend some support. And Alisa is a master gardener and I appreciate that. She's got a lot of things to do. And, uh, but why she would want to, uh, have this money and this opportunity to have the area that is universally called a mess right now, I, I wouldn't understand. But if this isn't passed today, then, then, uh, so be it. You can, you can say, no, we don't want 20 or $30,000.
Thank you, Margot. So the, the question that I have.
Dan, 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 you don't have the floor. Dan, Dan, you're interrupting. You do not have the floor. I'm recognizing Mark Harrington.
Bob, I have people waiting.
Hold on a minute. Hold on a minute.
Mark had his hand up. Mark had his hand up.
And I'm allowed to talk. Margot, that was very helpful. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. You have a really passionate interest and I respect it. My, and your job is to advocate for this, totally respect that. My job is to advocate for good governance. And this looks to me like we're trying to sneak one by. And that's, and that's just what I'm trying to avoid and do it in a more transparent manner. I mean, we did a special meeting at the last minute. I, I respect that we don't want these funds to run out. Are they running out in the next week?
Yeah, they might. Sure. Because if, if there's not a go ahead to, to use these funds for the trees in the arboretum, then there, there won't be a go ahead.
I don't understand. So they'll, they'll run out in the next week?
Not in the week, but they have to be okayed. It, it has to be okayed that they will be used for the arboretum. And when Ms. Plummer comes on as, and they are elected, she may or may not wish to use those funds uh, for trees in the arboretum, but that's up to her, of course. But we do know that the, that the current mayor is very passionate about the arboretum and cares about it deeply.
And I'm very passionate and care about good governance.
Well, that's wonderful.
Okay, I'd like to mark.
Yeah.
I'd like to market, recognize Mark Harrington. Thank you, Mark. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as, as some of you may know, or those who don't, you'll find out now. Uh, I speak exactly what I believe in. And I expect you and all of the people in a democracy to also speak what they believe in. Uh, I don't, I'm not a Republican. I'm not a Democrat. I vote for a person. I voted for our current mayor because he's done so much over 28 years and it just astounds me that he's not continuing in this because there, there's no reason for it. Now, that's separate and apart from what we are here for today. The reason we are here today is because we have an issue. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm just going to voice my opinion, good, bad or indifferent. Uh, we have a, an opportunity to pass a proclamation that says, "Thank you, Robert Corby, for having created a miracle over 28 years and busted your tail with virtually no cash to do that."
Mark, I'd just like to interrupt here. Really, what we're here for today is to allocate money to the arboretum, to fund the initial steps in the arboretum. That's the only thing that's on the agenda today is, is a budgetary decision to allocate the money from Community Solar and $1,000 of unspent money in our urban forestry program to be seed plantings at the arboretum. That's, that's the only thing really that we should be talking about. And, you know, I, I want to apply the same standard to everybody so we can keep, try to keep the politics out of it. And let's try to keep the, the discussion focused on the merits. Do we want to start an arboretum or not? It shouldn't be about who the mayor is or who it is not. Uh, we're just continuing the path to take the initial steps to get this transformation underway. It's an incredible resource. Uh, we've come a long way from 28 years ago when this was zoned for industrial development to the point now where it's going to become an arboretum and wildlife sanctuary. I think we have the money. Uh, we need to use it in it in the most timely way as possible. The reason this is time sensitive is depending on the contractor or the vendor that we select, we, it, everybody in that industry is, is very busy this time of year. So it's going to be a struggle to get the work done by June 1st and establish plantings during the wet season of the spring. That is the reason this is being done. It has not been done to be non-transparent. As you can see by the attendance in today's meeting, uh, the meeting was publicized. People know what we're doing. Uh, this is something that we have talked about for many months.
I, I appreciate everything that you're saying and I think one of the reasons that Pittsburgh is in the place that it is after 28 years is because there's been a hell of a group that have moved it up to this point. And, and all of the things that you're talking about today, and my apologies for having gotten off course. But other people in here, Dan, you've been talking about things that weave into politics. Do, do your thing, not my game. What I want to do is if you, if you're our mayor right now and if you feel that this is appropriate, let's do it. Because for 20 years, you've done a hell of a job. That's my.
I do feel it's appropriate. I do feel it's appropriate. And I think this is, uh, for a very low cost investment, annual investment, hopefully by the village and, and, uh, the future mayor. Uh, we are going to develop an incredible resource that no other community I know of our size has anything like the 33 acre, uh, nature preserve consisting of the Erie Canal Preserve and the new arboretum. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for our community. It's a wonderful legacy that we will leave for future generations. So it's with that optimism that I propose this resolution. I accept Lily's amendment. Uh, so there, it's very clear that no glyphosate will, or roundup will be used in any of the processes, planting or removal of invasive species. So we have a motion on the floor. I would ask, is there someone who would like to second it?
Bob, we still have two people that would like to speak.
Okay, then who are, who are the two people?
Um, there you go. Go ahead. You have the floor, first person.
Hi, it's Thadah. Gabriel, actually, I'm going to allow you to go since you are going to speak on behalf of, um, Ms. Dulsky and then I will talk afterwards.
Thank you so much, Thadah. Okay, yeah, so Ms. Dulsky asked me to type some things into chat a few minutes ago. Um, and because of no interpreter, the conversation has moved on, so sorry if this is no longer quite as relevant. She was saying that knotweed has to, uh, be physically removed repeatedly to see any ongoing success. And I suspect there's less than a quarter acres worth. It has to be physically removed repeatedly. Uh, sorry. And she said that this can take quite a long time. I'm sorry, because so much time has passed. I think I lost the second part of her comment. But, um, okay, that was her comment.
That's okay. That's okay. We realize that. And the areas where the knotweed was present have been cleaned for seasonal. That is not the area that is proposed for planting because we realize it's going to be a three or four year process at least. Um, because that knotweed will come back and we'll have to repeat the process over and over. The DPW is well aware of that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'm trying to type that.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
Um, and, and let me just, now, since I have the mic, let me just make a quick comment myself. Uh, it is concerning the, um, Margot, thank you for making a comment about the 20 to 30,000.
Do we have your name and address for the record though, please?
Yes, this is, now this is Gabriel Diaz speaking on behalf of myself. Um, and I'm at.
And, and we need, Gabe, could we get your address also?
I'm on South Street, Bob.
What's your number? The number?
81 South Street.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Margot, uh, I, I just think that, uh, this surprise mentioning of 20 to 30,000 dollars, that's coming from an unknown source that may arrive depending on how quickly we act now. And this is the impetus for having a special meeting during work hours without an interpreter so that certain people cannot participate. It's all very troubling from the perspective of a concerned villager that really does. I, I, I understand this may be critical in terms of invasive species, but it sounded like these invasive species take years to remove. And so I just don't understand why a few days will make a difference unless this is about a large amount of money, in which case we should really know more. I'm just really concerned and, and this sounds very rushed.
Couldn't agree more.
Gabe, please, um, all comments must be directed to the village board. We can't have separate conversations going on between audience members.
Uh, then.
Margot, you're welcome to speak, but I would ask you to direct all your comments to the village board, please.
All of that was aimed at the village board. All of that.
All comments have to be directed to the village board.
Okay, Bob and village board, I am expressing to you that I am concerned that it's, there's a large amount of money, it seems wrapped up in this meeting that people don't know about. And I would like to know more about this, this large amount of money, uh, what it's tied to, who potentially doing it, just, and, and to what degree this is motivating the need for this special meeting.
That, that for, on behalf of the village, there is, there is no consideration of outside money or outside funding. The proposal is strictly, as I described it, allocate, and it's not a lot of money. It's, it's $1,600 that has already been exclusively identified for the arboretum plus $1,000 out of the village forestry budget. And even during our budget discussions this year, we discussed allocating a, a, a certain amount out, out of our annual tree planting budget to use for money for plantings at the preserve. So none of this is new. None of this is a surprise for those board members that have been attending meetings and paying attention to the content.
Um, that's, that's not.
Okay, Margot, you had your hand up. I'm recognizing Margot Fass. Sorry, Dan, you're out of order.
Can I speak?
And it was not.
Margot Fass is recognized. Margot, you have the floor.
Yes, actually, uh, it can, the invasive is, is, um, made a little easier if you immediately plant some other plants like elderberry or gooseberry or something in the places where it's been built. So, so that improves the, um, removal of invasive. And then the second thing is, is that, uh, I, uh, in terms of the money, it's a private conversation, Gabriel, I mean, board, board, board members. It, uh, it was a private conversation and it was more, it has nothing to do with this meeting. I learned about it after the meeting had already been set. But I do know that it is contingent on the plans of, uh, for the village arboretum to go forward.
So shady, the whole thing.
Can I?
Dan, you, you're not recognized.
Okay.
Okay, who else do we have to speak? Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Yes, Bob, we have. Go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to.
Hi, sorry, can I just, I just want to make a quick comment. I gave up my turn. I helped Gabe out, so I just want to make a quick comment. Um, it's.
Is this you? Is this you, Thadie? We need your name and address for our minutes.
Yep, I was getting to that. Thadah, Thavakumar, 3 Water Drive, Pittsburgh. Um, so I, I'm confused as to the money because there's, you know, $1,000 is coming out, 1,600 is coming out. And then there was a comment about 30,000, like, so what's the exact money? Where is it coming from? And then where, like, is there contingent money in case we don't passes? And like, what's the deadline? Like, is it really something that needs to happen today? Can it be done next week? Like, I just, I'm, I'm not sure where the rush is because there's clearly a lot of confusion, it sounds like, from many people who have commented.
Let me, let me respond, please. There's no confusion. There's a simple proposal for $2,600 in this year's budget including $1,600 from the Community Solar Program, which when we agreed to participate in the Community Solar Program, uh, the village board agreed to allocate the extra money generated from that program for the arboretum. The other $1,000 in, included, and this is all the money, there's no confusion about this in the proposal, is already in the village budget. Uh, we already discussed using some money from the tree planting uh, to plant trees on the arboretum. It just gives enough money so there's a seed planting so we can start establishing new native plants on the arboretum and begin the transformation of that area into a mature northern hardwoods woodland community arboretum. It's a very simple proposal.
So if that's already in the budget, why must it be approved today and can't wait till next week?
Because planting. Because planting, we have to deal with a contractor and a vendor to get the plants from. There's some coordination that will be required. People in the nursery industry are extremely busy this time of year. If we don't program it now, it will be too late and it will, the, the season will pass and the work will not get done. That's the reason we're doing it today. And the, the board knows this. We talked about this for months. We, last week, I met with an arborist, a native plant expert, to go over there and find out the, the best recommended species to plant. This is something that I said I would do months ago. I'm following through. I'm sorry that it's getting politicized today, but it really is the work of the board, as the board has discussed for months, even longer, that we were going to initiate this, this, this year. I hope it's something that the future mayor will carry on. I'm proud of the work that our board has done reserving this area for the public. And I hope the board will vote to approve this modest funding to begin work on the arboretum this, this spring. Okay, with that said, is there a second on my motion?
Excuse me, I have some points to make.
Yep, go ahead, Frank.
Okay, trustee Galusha. What I'd like to say is that this topic of the arboretum is not new. It's been discussed for a number of months. We have talked about it many, many times. And it's been evaluated. And now we have a proposal from Jim Engel, I think, and, and an arborist. And his proposal recommends work that needs to be done. And it appears that the work that needs to be done now with the season, we can't wait two weeks, we can't wait three weeks. The seasons change. This work needs to be done, number one. Number two, the point is that there are contractors that are not waiting at the village hall to get word from us to start working. There is a lot of work to be done all around town, and we have to nail that work down to get this work done. Three, our DPW, we, we have a very small staff, and this is one of our busiest times. They're going to be working on this project. They need to get to it. They need to get to it right now. So, and the funds are available, the funds are available now. The fact that we've been talking about this, the fact that now that we're getting so close to doing the work that we want to table it, the fact that we have contractors waiting and our DPW is ready to work, we should get on with the work. Simple as that. And that's my point of view.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second for my motion?
Second.
Okay, I would ask for a roll call vote from Dorothea.
Bob, that wasn't a board member, I'm sorry.
I apologize. You're quite right.
That was Mark Harrington.
Would a board member like to second, thank you, Mark, thank you for the effort. Would a board member like to second my motion?
Trustee Galusha will second that motion.
Thank you, Frank. Dorothea would hear me. Roll call vote, please.
Yes, we can hear you, Dan.
Okay, so I, I just have a couple of questions before the vote. And I, and I'm allowed to ask these questions, all right? This is discussion time and I'm allowed to ask these questions. So the first question, and I'm going to ask both of them, and then I'd like you to answer them. So please let me get both of these questions out. The first is, since the agreement, since the proposal that we have received does include Roundup, and we're going to amend it to say, no, you can't use Roundup, do we then get a different price on it? Because I would assume there is some cost to the Roundup. So that is, that's a question, so I, I don't know how much we're approving. And then the second question is, per our procurement policy, we are supposed to get more than one bid. And did we?
I can respond, I can respond to both of those, Dan. For the first question, part of, part of the proposal that we're not accepting is the invasive plant removal because that work is going to be done for our DPW. So we will not be charged. The money that we're spending will be towards new plant purchases and planting. That's what, the only thing the money is going to be spent on. That's, that's very clear in the proposal. As far as the procurement policy is, I believe this is under the amount where we need three bids. The other thing to mention is that Jim Engel is a regional expert in native plants. He has a nursery in Kannandegwa that deals exclusively in native plants in this area. He's, he's one of the only nurseries in the area that does this, and, and nobody else does it on the scale that he does. He really is the regional expert in native species, which is harmonious with both the goals of the village arboretum as well as a frog house in, in their project in vermiculture.
So Frank, a question for you, Frank. Is, at, this is over two thousand dollars. What is the, what does our procurement policy say? How, what's the, I thought it was anything over a thousand dollars. We had to get more than, I, I thought it was three bids.
Um, Dan, I don't know.
Unless there's a professional expertise in a specific field, and it's not feasible to get three bids because there aren't three other vendors or two other vendors that would have the same expertise.
The amount of BS. Frank, could you answer that question, please?
I can answer that question. The procurement policy says that we need, we need two bids. But there is an exception based on the experience, the expertise of the contractor or the person that we are going to retain. And I think the mayor did explain that Mr. Engel has special qualifications that wish, that we would go forward with him based on his qualifications. That's why we are going forward with him.
So Dan, would you like to apologize to me for saying I was full of BS? I, I'm, I will accept your apology.
No, I'll, I'll stand behind that. If you'd like examples, I can give them.
Okay, I figured you wouldn't apologize. Okay, all right, we have a motion on the floor. Dorothea, would you call a vote, please?
Excuse me, I'm, I tuned in late. I'm just wondering, may I make a comment as a resident?
Yes, you may too, but could we have your name and address, please?
Yes, I'm Sue Emel. I live at Six South Main Street in the village. I just tuned in. I just tuned in. And personally, I absolutely treasure that green space. It's priceless. And any money to be spent on developing it to remain undeveloped essentially is, to me, just also, it's priceless. My other observation is the unfortunate and very sad personal vitriol that exists between some board members and the mayor. And I'm appealing to the professional potential that when board members make their vote, they can put their personal feelings aside and vote with a professional sense of duty to the village, to posterity, to history, to the residents, to the future. Really, it's very little money. And I hope that personal feelings will be put aside. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much for everyone's comments. Dorothea, we have a motion on the floor that's been seconded. Would you do a roll call vote, please?
Before we do the roll call, can I ask one last question?
You certainly can, yes.
The, my one concern about this, the money is already set aside. We're not asking, or you're not asking with this proposal for additional funding.
Correct.
The, my one concern is about the use of the Roundup. So if we, I don't know what we can do. That one proposal that we have is via an email, it's not a really formal estimate. So I'm, I share a concern. I can't remember who else asked about it, but just to make sure, I know we're voting and saying that it won't include the, I mispronounced it earlier, but the, whatever the generic term of Roundup is. Just how that'll, yes, how that'll impact the price.
Renee, it's very clear in my motion that no glyphosate nor, we're not funding removal of invasive species. That work is being done by the DPW. No glyphosate is involved. No glyphosate is proposed. It will be in the record of this meeting that there is no glyphosate to be funded, used or in any way, you know, part of this proposal at all. It's very clear, okay? So I, I want to make that clear to everyone. There's no glyphosate is proposed, no Roundup. That is not part of this proposal. This proposal is twenty-six hundred dollars allocated strictly for the planting of new plants at the arboretum. Site preparation will be done by our DPW. We will not need to fund that. It's only the purchase of the plants and the planting of the plants. And then hopefully our crew will be able to water them, especially through the dry season, to make sure they make it through the first season. It's, it's amazing. I've seen this technique used in other places. The transformation will astound all of you because it happens quickly when you use native plants like this. Okay, Dorothea, would you call a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Lanthir?
Lanthir, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Keating? Dan, you're muted.
You got me now?
Yep.
Okay, no on procedural grounds. We didn't get enough quotes. Thanks.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, everybody. Motion to adjourn.
Do we have minutes? I'm sorry, do we have minutes that we have to approve?
I'm sorry, those minutes weren't ready. We had a issue, we didn't have them ready. We were hoping to get them tied up, so they'll be in the next meeting.
Sure, okay. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Dorothea, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Lanthir?
Lanthir, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
Motion passes. Good night.